Welcome, everyone, to the Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, June 14, 2022. In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, notice is hereby given to the Planning Board. We'll meet on Tuesday, June 14, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the meeting room of 124 at 1 Liberty A, Norfolk, Mass. Alternative public access to this meeting has been provided via Zoom, which is an online video conferencing. This application will allow users to view the meeting and provide comments during the allocated windows. To join, follow the web link that was previously provided or call the number that was also previously provided. The meeting will be recorded for future broadcast by the Norfolk Community Tele. Welcome, everyone. And I did want to say that we have one Planning Board member that is remote via Zoom, so we will do all votes via roll call vote. And so today, we have -- we'll just kind of start around the room. We have Betsy, our--
Executive Assistant.
Sorry, draw to blank.
Sorry.
We have Rich, our Town Planner. We have--
Sherry Norman, Senior Director.
Yes. John Weddleton, myself, Chad Peck--
Chris Monfort.
Gary Sullivan. And we do have -- we currently don't have anybody in the room, but we do have a few people on Zoom, and Eric is one of them. And we also, I did want to mention, we also have a new associate member. I don't see her on the call, do I? No.
I don't see her on the call.
So we do have a new associate member that was sworn in today, Melissa Mayo, and she will more than likely be joining us via Zoom this evening. So with that, let's get started with our first appointment.
Excellent. So I'll kick it off, and myself, Sherry, we have -- and Rick Goodrow is joining us via Zoom. So Rick has been hired by the town Norfolk Council on Agent to prepare what you have before you on the screen, a site plan which includes the proposed new pavilion to the lower right-hand -- or left-hand side, sorry, of the site, as well as a parking lot reconfiguration expansion in terms of some of the parking that's out there. The excess parking that's out there is on gravel would be formalized into a paved surface.
Everybody enforcement and I think having a nice sign on that.
The competition.
You'd think after two years it had soon.
In terms of better circulation, lighting, and so forth. So what the purpose of tonight is get your real informal feedback. It does have to come back before your formally for site plan modification. But we wanted to get a feel from the planning board on at least this concept, get some thoughts in terms of your opinion about it, and then, based on that, work towards presenting a formal site plan. Couple things just as we start off. As you'll notice, the parking that's up against the senior center now, which is angular, is proposed to be parallel to the building, which there will be some grading changes a little bit towards -- more towards Medway Branch to be handicap ADA requirements. And there's some additional handicapped parking spaces closer to the building for those folks that are -- that need handicap parking. And then to the top, you'll see some additional parking that's, again, closer proximity to the senior center, which is proposed over the septic system field. And then there's the reconfiguration to the left-hand side. And then, of course, the pavilion in the lower left-hand corner. And the reason why we want to give feedback, right now, the funding's in place for the pavilion. The funding isn't in place for the parking lots expansion, so we're trying to line things up so you can do the pavilion work, associated site work around that, and then come back and do the parking lot expansion. There has been another earmark requested from the state for the parking lot expansion. I believe there's submitted for COVID too, I think there's another--
Well, that would be nice.
There's other financial requests to fund that parking lot expansion to try to move it up in terms of getting that built. But in any event, there is money for the pavilion, so we'll make sure everything matches. I probably took a good chunk of Rick's presentation, but I think before we get to Rick, I'll let Sherry talk about the needs and why you see what's before you tonight.
Okay, thank you. I'm really glad that I got the opportunity to come before you. As I said, I'm only here for another month. Been here three and a half years, and I've been trying to get this on this table since I walked in the door practically. I don't know if any of you have been to the senior center and seen the parking lot, but it's really in bad condition. And besides the need for expansion and some of the other handicap spaces and kind of things Rich has already talked about, you know, it's -- there's sections of it that are really dangerous. So I think it needs to be addressed as soon as possible, and that funding is a big question mark. But, you know, I'm not going to be here to see it through, but I wanted to come before you and just talk about, you know, conceptually what the need is and also what Rich and Rick and I have done over the course of, I don't know, a couple of years. I lose track with COVID time. But in any event, you know, the building's about 20-plus, probably the design phase was about 25 years ago. So obviously, the town has grown a lot. People don't tend to get younger as they get older, so the senior population has really, you know, exploded in that time. So we need more spaces. That's the first thing. Mobility issues don't tend to improve with age, so we need more spaces closer to the building. That was kind of one of the other overriding, you know, goals that we took as we approached the project. We've already talked about the increased spaces. What happens now is a lot of illegal parking, double parking, blocking around the back of the building is a loading dock for, say, meals on wheels and maintenance. And so what happens is people double park along that stretch of driveway, so trucks can't get through. It's difficult for pedestrian crossings. So there's a number of issues with the existing design. And so I think, Rich, you and I and Barry, right, very early on, started talking about this. And then COVID, you know, everything got kind of delayed. So really happy that the CPC approved the funding for the pavilion. That was town meeting 2021. So what we talked about, since the pavilion is going to be sited within the parking lot, try to come up with a site plan that works for both projects, you know, get the pavilion done as soon as we can, and then look for other sources of funding to do the parking lot down as soon as we can.
So I did have a few questions. You answered one of them. What was the driving -- one of my questions, what's the driving force of the parking? But I think you answered that.
Yeah. The other thing, if you haven't been there, and I don't know the history of it, but there's a whole gravelly section that also makes it not only difficult -- it can't be plowed. There's not really platable snow. And, you know, when we were at full capacity and we're getting back to that point, you know, we were parking back there, and we'd have to have, you know, traffic cones and people directing traffic. And again, not the best conditions. So that needs to be addressed anyway, you know, somehow fixing that section. And then, as I said, just the increased numbers of people using the building and the other need for parking closer to the building.
Now, the piece that stuck out to me was with regards to the disrepair of the parking lot as it currently stands. But it seems the preferences around getting the pavilion first?
Well, because we already have the funding for that--
Got it. Mark that for the parking lot. Understood.
Yes, the parking lot -- oh, excuse me. The pavilion money came through the Community Preservation Committee.
Right.
And now, the dark boundary that I'm seeing here on the drawing, is that the property boundary or current extents?
A good point. So that is the current property boundary. The parking is shown off of that site, but that is the town Norfolk land. So along with this, they'll have to -- we'll have to have an A&R plan to resize this lot, taking out a larger parcel, because it's up against the maximum block or impervious coverage right now. So that would have to be part of the process to create -- get larger in the size of the lot in order to stay below that 25%.
Got it. So then we already own that side.
Correct.
What's the current number of spaces versus -- I see the proposed already.
I know. Rick, do you have it? It's 30, 30-something, 32, 34?
Sure. Good evening. Rick Goodrow with United Consultants. Thank you to the board for hearing us this evening. And Sherry, you are right. There are 32 total parking spaces on the site, currently two handicap spaces and 30 conventional spaces. We'd be expanding that to six handicap spaces along the west side of the building with a reconfiguration of that area and adding 60 or coming up with a total of 67 total conventional parking spaces for a total of 73 spaces.
Sounds like the original amount seems low compared to what we would typically have put in.
Yeah. And, you know, we've had the opportunity to talk with Sherry, who obviously is onsite and has a good understanding of the parking demands that are generated by the use of the facility at different events. So we certainly took that into consideration when we expanded the parking area.
Sense. I haven't done the research, but I presume the parking they did back, the original site plan, sure complied with the bylaw requirements for parking, but not necessarily the demand, perhaps, you know, and use of it. That'd be my guess as well, you know.
And so that long driveway that kind of cuts around those handicap spaces will give easement over to additional parking, which is over the septic field, right? I'm reading that correctly? The septic field's top of that little driveway?
So everything -- so we're going to redraw. So then--
Number five and six.
Yeah, that's--
This is the leach field, and then this is going to give way. And so this is where they come in to dump all of their deliveries.
Yeah.
Yep.
And so I might as well tell you, in terms of help context with this, we did explore the pavilion to that upper east side, northeast side of the site, but it's a little bit tight. You see the tree edge there. There's underground propane tanks over there. And there is also some neighbors that are a little bit closer approximate to that side of the site where the proposed location is now. You know, it's tucked in behind the hill, and you know, you come up from Medway Branch, and it's -- the grade comes up and drops down, so it'd be kind of placed in there, hopefully. And where it's located, the houses across the street are pretty offset to it, too. So that was part of the decision to go in that location.
I think the other thing is wanting more spaces through the building.
Yeah.
And the pavilion, from a programmatic standpoint, is a direct line to the front door. Also, we have electricity already to the island, and we'd like to extend that to be able to offer ceiling fans or whatever else we need for electrical needs at the pavilion for future programming. Currently, we do parking lot events. My party's the 29th, "Come on Down, Cake and Ice Cream."
Nice.
And we have entertainment that have -- we've done pretty much a similar event for the past couple of years, and, you know, they play in the island. So it's -- and people kind of -- we have like a tailgate party. People bring their chairs. And that actually was going to be great about the pavilion. It'll give us extra shade space, which right now is, especially in the end of June, beginning of July. Not that I'm complaining, but, you know, it can get, you know, hot and sunny out there.
Anybody else have any other comments? Gary?
Looks pretty straightforward.
Eric, do you have any comments?
Yeah, a question. Would you consider bollards out in front of the pavilion? Between parking and the pavilion?
We're talking about those concrete abutment kinds of things?
Yeah.
From a safety standpoint?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if we have any many spaces near there. I mean, we -- Rick, you want to speak to this? You added an extension, like a concrete pad next to the pavilion. So I'm not sure we're going to have a conflict with parking?
Well, you got the last parking spot there, people would back--
Yeah, just those--
Into the pavilion without--
Just those couple. I don't know. I think, again, it's not going to be on my watch. I think they're pretty ugly, but I mean, when the time comes, if that's a recommendation of the board.
Yeah, I think we'd want to look at spaces 29, maybe, or 30 to 32 definitely, as well as the backing out area. And that sent that main driveway of the proposed expansion to the west of the site certainly provides a--
And we could even--
Definitely a curving line there. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, you know, you can even live without a couple of spaces in that corner. I'm not sure how much they get used anyways, other than for maybe people, you know, if we're going to be, say, the instructor doing the Zumba class might park there, because it's convenient, you know, whatever.
I know that you--
That and the remaining angled -- few remaining angled spots, 29 to 32, seem to be a lot of place.
Yeah, so we actually did talk about having some kind of baller protection up against the senior center. You're talking about those spaces there, Eric?
No, 29 to 32 are the only angled ones that are going to remain. But bollards--
Right outside the pavilion.
In front of the long side of the pavilion--
Oh, okay.
And in front of 30, 31, 32.
Yeah. We actually did -- so I'll take it off from your point. We did actually talk about it for the spaces up against that, straight in up to the senior center, because one of the things that were, as part of this plan change, is there will be wheel stops, but we also wanted to bring the curb down to grade, so that way, there's not a trip hazard. So we will need to have some protection on the other side, which is onto the landscape side of it, so someone doesn't drive into the senior center.
And I know this is preliminary, but, Rick, you also had some interesting landscaping ideas for not only that sort of thing, but, you know, for discharge, you know, within the parking lot itself, right?
Yes. So the effective was from existing spaces 14 through 24 to the west of that and between that and the proposed sidewalk, which utilizing -- possibly utilizing that for a rain garden area. We utilize some LID techniques for the stormwater. We have conducted some soil permeability testing on the site. Results were very favorable. So we're optimistic that the groundwater, the stormwater infiltration will be able to be accomplished. But we were looking at, again, providing a landscaped bioretention area, rain garden area within that island, if you will, for the storm water capture and treatment. Just an idea and concept at this time. We're moving into that phase now. We're certainly moving into, you know, looking at the safety protection that's been brought up, obviously, concerns about pedestrian activities taking place on the concrete pad area as well as the pavilion and the interaction of the vehicles in close proximity to that. So certainly some good points, and we will take those in as we further develop the design of the site. Thank you.
John, you have any comments?
No comments.
I know that you can pave over your septic field there, your leach field. I'm not exactly sure what the requirements are to do that, off the top of my head.
That was just my -- that was my question, Rick.
But does it -- so what kind of testing needs to be done to make sure that that is going to be adequate?
So we're looking into the ASB -- well, we've looked at the ASB, I should say, of the septic system. Obviously, the grades are going to be a concern in that area. So the pipe that was utilized as per the ASB plans and the plans of record are indicating that it would be sufficient for traffic loading. We're going to obviously need to maintain adequate cover over that area, earth cover over that area, so that we would be able to accomplish the paving. The trench length necessitated that venting take place. That would be another requirement if, in fact, we were paving over the septic leaching area, and the trenches would then need to be vented. But that's already in place. So those are the things that we're going to look at as we, again, further develop the site--
Okay.
And get into the stormwater and utility design portions of it.
Okay. Anybody else have--
Are any of the septic beds reserved, or are they all actually built out?
Those are the actual four trenches that are constructed.
The reserve is in between. The reserve area is in between, Eric?
Is that shown, the reserve area?
No, we did not show the reserve area, but we can certainly add that to the plans.
Anybody else have any other comments?
Just one last one. Knowing the capacity issues that you were having before, are you satisfied with the number of spaces that you were able to get out of this plan completely? Or do you think you'd need more when due time?
I mean, more than double sounds good to me at this point in time. I think it -- I don't know if we live here if we expand that much further. I'm not sure. You know, I think it down the road, maybe it's an addition to the senior center, and, you know, we go up. I don't know. I think it's certainly a lot better than what we have now. You know, the thing about the, you know, utilization, it's, you know, it's not constant.
Right.
Things come and go. So, you know, a big event, certainly it would accommodate that. But other times, maybe more than we need. But I think it's -- I'm happy with it.
Okay. That's it.
Does anyone know the occupancy of the existing building?
Well, right now, fire code is 60 per level. We have two levels. But I think the most we have is, you know, on any given -- well, you know, my party's going to be able to test that. I'm very popular. You know, I would say 60 is about, you know, the maximum that we have, you know, for lunches, which is the -- pretty much the majority of the first floor.
Looks like we have a question on Zoom.
Yep.
Question from the Peanut Gallery.
Yep.
Thanks. Since the town just went through the ADA complacency review, I'm just looking on mass.gov, and it says that 20% of total spaces should be accessible for facilities with mobility impairment. I'm not sure if that considered if the senior center is -- falls into that category, but just to make sure that we don't slip into noncompliance with ADA, since we just did that review. I'm not sure how many total spaces was mentioned? How many total parking spots?
What do we have, six?
No, no, no. How many total -- it's 20% of your total spaces have to be accessible.
Eighty-seven proposed spaces.
Thirty-seven. So that's more than six spaces.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven. So you're talking more like--
And then eight handicapped.
Eight handicaps.
So that's 10% roughly.
Parking spots you would need. Anyway, I just thought I'd mention it. Maybe someone can look up the ADA complacency and just make sure we don't slip out of complacency. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, considering the ADA audit said our non-automatic door was okay, I don't know.
Yeah, we'll take a peek. I think the parking -- so we'll double check, but I'm pretty in terms of Architectural Access Board and the ADA is based on number of parking spaces? I'll have to look and see what your -- we'll double check regardless. We don't want to fall into noncompliance.
Yeah, that's a good point.
You're correct, Rich. The ADA has a formula based on the total parking spaces of the site and what percentage or what number of those have to be handicapped. But we can certainly talk with, I believe, was it Matt Hafner who was running the ADA compliance study?
It was actually Scott Ragan, the HR director was--
HR director.
He's the ADA officer, so I'm not sure who's going to have that role going forward.
He's retiring, too, so we'll have to -- we'll, regardless, we'll do our homework.
Yeah, I mean, we're ways away from building this. We need the money.
Right. It seems like your objective this evening is to get this informal review, because it's like you have the money for the pavilion, you want to make sure the pavilion fits into the -- the pavilion in the site works with the parking and the whole -- that way you got the whole plan.
Right. And as I'm going out the door, I wanted to be the one personally for you.
Makes sense.
Appreciate that.
No, and I think that that's great, and I do appreciate you coming. And yeah, because that -- the right place-- -- the money for it. And in the meantime, you can work on -- well, you or your replacement can work on appropriating the--
Yeah, actually, Rich has told me he'd find the money for me.
Any other questions from the audience or the board members?
All set.
All right, great. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Enjoy the party.
Thank you very much.
All right, so our next appointment is 7:15. So we're a little behind. Norway Farms Subdivision?
Yeah, the -- so Rob Kane, the developer for Norway Farms, is not on. Here's more an update from myself in terms of -- we met with Rob, DPW, Barry LaRiviere, Assistant Director, on site, and talked about removal of the path, the -- between Crestbrook Road and Norway Farm Drive. What I need to do next is to meet with the Riley's to talk about the rest, you know, the restoration work to remove the trail. But for tiny at least, I'd like to get at least an indication. I think, hopefully, the concept of removing this trail between the two makes sense. If you had a chance to go out, take a peek, I think conceptually, it sounded probably made sense when it was going through the permitting process, and it was a good idea. But I think, you know, as it is now with the sidewalks and Crestbrook Road and then Norway Farm Drive, and then the sidewalk that's going to be going in along Medway Street connecting the two, provides a nice loop walkway that you have with sidewalk that can very well serve the purpose, so to speak, you know, instead of really -- point of fact, when you look at the Riley's lot, the through -- no, there's not the through road anymore. So that is gone by, you know, that's not the decision that was made. And so we look at it in the present going forward. It's a little clunky, like, do I go through here? You know what I mean? Because it is part of the lawn area. Just so as it seems, I don't think by removing that trail, anybody would be harmed. The utilities are there on the ground, so they would have to remain. The easy will remain in place. But if the board is acceptable to that, then Rob would need to request the modification to formally do it, because I don't want to leave it hanging out, you know, when you close the loop on it. So but -- so hopefully, the board thinks that makes sense. But I'd want to talk to the Riley's first before you actually formally vote to do that.
John, I think you'd mentioned you went out there recently.
Yeah, it looks easy enough to lumen seed and just throw it back to its natural state.
All right. Yeah, I drove out there as well after our last meeting. Forget which one. We've had so many recently. But it was one of those. I drove out there, looked at it. I'm like, it -- yeah, I agree with John. I think it would be pretty straightforward to put down a few inches of loam, seed it, and move on. But yeah, we need to make sure all parties are -- be amenable to that.
Yeah, we did. And so Barry and I met with Rob. There is a contractor that DPW uses on contract to do a lot of this type of work. So the thought being that they're familiar with -- well, so DPW's familiar with our work and vice versa, that Rob could just, you know, he'd be paying for, obviously, for this work, but that probably they could use that contractor to do the work and get it done efficiently and done well. So Rob seemed to be amenable to that as well. So--
Okay. Understood. Makes sense. All right. Any other questions from the board? Nope. Any comments, questions from the audience?
The Peanut Gallery, you mean?
Yes. Any questions from Zoom?
I'll just, you know, reiterate that, you know, going forward, even if it was a pathway, you know, as you guys saw firsthand, the maintenance of it going, you know, going forward is just -- whose responsibility would that be? And, you know, eventually, Rob's going to retire and, you know, probably move-- And, you know, eventually Rob's going to retire and, you know, probably move out of town and then, you know, who's going to, you know, take care of it, so. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, so the maintenance would have fallen upon the town Norfolk to maintain it. So that, for the piece that's on, over their property, yeah, so, you know, we kind of struggle a little bit as it is to keep on top of the maintenance that we do at times, so, you know, another piece to it would certainly.
The town also has stockpiles of loom, doesn't it, down at the yard?
What's that?
Doesn't the town have stockpiles of loom down at the DPW yet? I know they sell it to residents.
Do they? Okay. No, I'm just saying in terms of just maintaining the trail overall, long term.
We're going, overseeding.
Yeah, trail, you know, trail wide, basically, you know, so.
Again, once you seed this, it's just going to become.
Yeah, it'll just become part of the law. Right. I just want to go over with them before.
Yep.
That's it for that.
Yeah, it will just become what it was. It was beautiful lawn prior. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we do have our associate member, Melissa, has joined us via Zoom. Welcome, Melissa.
Congrats, welcome. And you're on mute again. There we go.
Thank you, guys.
Welcome aboard.
Sorry, I had some link troubles, but all set now. I watched on the YouTube for a little bit until I could get in.
Okay, great.
Excellent.
All right, I guess we'll move on to our next appointment. Our 7:30 appointment for 360 Main Street, Camgir Coating Systems, request for occupancy.
Yeah, so Camgir had submitted to us today the affidavit from the engineer alone with the ASBIL plan in order to seek occupancy permit. So where we're at the moment would be, they're seeking a temporary occupancy to, or to occupy the building. And what I would, I did talk to Phil Paris this afternoon from Beta. He's fairly confident that the inspector could go out tomorrow. So thought process would be is maybe just have maybe contingent vote from to go out, do a site inspection, verify the ASBIL plan in order to issue a temporary occupancy. And I don't, Dan, Bill, Bill, how much time do you need? Bill Curry is the construction manager for the project in terms of completing the project in totality.
The, the project is 100% complete at this point.
Wow, so he wasn't even out there, you could tell. So it's 100% complete?
Yes, it is.
Has the building inspector been out to review for occupancy?
Not this, he's, I don't know where they, where you stand with the building departments in terms of the building occupancy.
We're meeting with the building inspector tomorrow morning for a final inspection.
Okay.
Well, he's the one that gets occupancy, not us.
Well, you have to grant, in terms of timing, this is more, really more of a timing issue, actually. If, if we had gotten the ASBIL plan and Beta had been able to go out and see everything done, we really probably would not be talking about a temporary occupancy permit tonight. But the fact the timing didn't line up, so really, the bylaw allows the building commission to issue a temporary with the planning board's blessing. So that's why I'm discussing a temporary till we could catch up on it.
Phil has been there already.
Phil, Phil hasn't been for the final, for the occupancy permit, but they have been through the construction process observing the work, so.
The work's done.
So if it's acceptable to vote to issue a temporary, and we, if.
So if we vote to issue a temporary, like say a 30-day temporary, then we'll have all the reports from Phil by our next meeting.
Correct.
And we can then recommend, I mean, we don't.
We wouldn't issue the final occupancy.
No, that's the building.
That's the building department.
We don't give occupancy.
Yeah, we don't do that.
Recommend to Bob.
Right.
Right, but then we can give a recommendation, yeah.
But isn't that what they're doing tomorrow?
Well, he's looking, it's really process, it's really timing, quite honestly, because Bob's going to be out there tomorrow, but we're here tonight.
I guess what I'm asking is, does what we do tonight really matter if they're going out there tomorrow anyway?
It may not, but just to be safe.
Because we don't meet again for another 30 days.
Because you don't meet for until July 12th.
My first question right off the bat, what ended up happening with the trash then? Did you end up leaving it in the original place?
We ended up removing the dumpster from the project and they're going to utilize the existing facility for the small amount of trash debris that comes out of the new facility.
Okay, so you're just basically taking it, once it's offloaded from that loading dock, and bringing it back to the existing building and utilizing the dump that's there?
That's correct.
Okay. What was the other question that they came back to us for last time? It was the trash and.
The grading, the slopes.
The grading of the slopes.
Yeah, so they went with the monolithic Cape Cod burn.
Looks nice.
Yeah, the whole project looks really nice. All right, I think I'm fine.
Listen, this is just more conservative to be sure.
No, I can appreciate that.
Any other board members have any questions?
I agree with Chris. I'm finally, that I drive by it probably at least once a day, so it does look very nice.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wasn't on the, the planning board at the time, but I wish we did something or recommended something different for that power station transformer that's out in the front that you see right as you pass the farm. That's right there. The first thing you see.
I know what you're talking about, yeah.
But the next project will deal with stuff like that.
So.
So that, that case, I won't be looking for a motion.
So, yes, so entertain a motion for a.
30-day?
30-day temporary occupancy.
For 360 Main Street.
For 360 Main Street, Camgir Coating Systems.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We will do a roll call vote. John Waddleton?
Aye.
Chris Monfort?
Aye.
Gary Sullivan?
Aye.
Eric Diamond?
Aye.
And Chad Peck votes aye, so it is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you.
So Bob could actually issue a permanent occupancy tomorrow when he goes out, right?
They still need Board of Health sign off, so.
Okay, so it's still going to be temporary.
Close.
Yep.
Okay. Our next appointment is 7:45, but we are early, so.
It's not a public hearing, so you can actually.
You can do it.
You can do it.
Take it unless somebody.
Okay, all right. So we will do the Preserve at Kinney Pond subdivision, request for modi, modification of Lot 33 to revise drain and access easement.
I will recuse myself since I am the owner of the easements.
So Rich, do you want to bring us up to speed where we're at with, and Betsy's going to put something on the screen.
Yeah. So for Chris and Chad and Gary, Gary, you were an associate member at the time, but you have some, I'm sure you recollect that the easements for the drainage easements that were part of the Board of Health requirements years ago are significant in terms of the size of them, well beyond the basins themselves. And there was, I'm trying to think of the two lots, last, I think it was in November, December of last year, you.
We did one.
14th, there you go, thanks. You modified, essentially reduced the drainage easement from the original plan. And this is really a similar situation, again, reducing the easement. So the drainage basins within the easement, it's just a matter of, I'll call it over-easement. Well, that's not probably good technical.
Conservative, Rich.
Yeah, conservative, right. So the, so the homeowner is, hopefully, you'll bless this tonight and approve it, their construction project is on hold right now. And they're hopefully, this is really just administrative matter and there's no, in terms of, the basins with the easement, so it's not as if, you know, we're losing anything here, we're more than covered when, in terms of easement that we have on the lot. And it's not what we do anymore in terms of practice to have easements that.
So, Ben may speak?
Microphone.
And the board recognizes Mr. Waddleton?
Green light? Should we make him state his name and address?
Yes, please.
John Waddleton, Seven Trails Sideway. In a project like this, which is a plan set of 120 pages, a lot of things get overlooked in the process between the consulting engineer and the towns engineers. Now, the normal easement for something like this is normally on the lot line, it's 10 feet on either, either lot to get access, and around the basin, it's normally 10 feet. In this case here, somebody forgot to post and cut and paste a line where the easement on the budding lot was 100 feet. The easement on this lot, I think, is 70 feet, way overkill. So something was left off of the final design. And we had the DPW department out there just to confirm that this is really not what it should be and not what's required in town. So on the other lots, one of budding this one across the street, and they lowered the easements from 110 feet in one lot and 70 on the other, down to a 10-foot easement around the basin. And in this case, I think that's all they're talking, there's no easement on the lot line.
And so last time, for the previous lots, Barry joined us. We don't have him here, but Rich, we have it in good faith that DPW is good with this change?
Yes. If you, it's a lot of line work there, but if you can see.
Lot, where is it? Oh, 33, 33, 33, right here, right there.
Yep. Right. Top right.
Up.
Up.
Um, right here.
Yep. You can see, it's kind of hard to see it, but you can see the easement's quite.
The easement line runs here, the existing easement line runs here, correct?
Correct.
And then, was it Lot 34, we moved the easement line back?
Yep, 34 and.
Then across 14. 14.
So 34 is the one that has the train tracks behind it, right?
Well, they all have the tracks behind them, yeah. All those over there, 34, 33, 32.
Just making sure I'm on the right side of the street.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it. DPW is fine with it. I don't think we need to spend too much time on it.
I agree with that. Any other comments? Eric? Melissa, any comments as an associate member?
No, it definitely seems like overkill for the easement.
So, so you're looking for a motion?
Yes.
So.
There's a plan in front of you if you want to.
Do we need to reference this?
Yeah, it probably would be good to reference it.
What's referenced on this?
The page number probably?
It's just one sheet, so.
What does it say, the title block there?
Title block. It just has modification of definitive subdivision. Is that what you want looking for?
Yeah, and then reference the date.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the modification of definite subdivision to Preserve at Kinney Pond located in the town of Norfolk County, Norfolk, Mass, prepared for Matthew and Kathleen Graziano, Seven Rights Farm Road, Norfolk, Mass, which includes Lot 33, that is for, that is the Seven Rights Farm Road. And the plan was, this set of plans was prepared on June 3, 2022.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We will do a roll call vote. We'll start with Eric. You're muted, Eric. We'll come back to Eric.
I think there's an audio issue.
Yep, I think there might be an audio issue. We'll come back to Eric. So Gary?
Aye.
Chris Monfort?
Aye.
Chad Peck votes aye, and Eric Diamond?
Aye.
Okay, so we have four.
Excellent, thank you. All right, thank you.
I'll have you endorse that plan. I'll have you endorse that plan tonight before you leave.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So now we just shift down to new old business?
Yep, new old business. We have meeting minutes. We have two sets of meeting minutes, May 16, 2022, and June 6, 2022. I reviewed those, I did not see any modifications. I don't know if the rest of the board.
No, they look good.
Look good.
Who's that clerk?
That's Eric, Eric's the clerk.
Eric.
Eric is.
I forgot to explain this part to him. So Eric, I'll do this on your behalf, motion to review and approve the meeting minutes from, five is May 16, 2022. Somebody says?
So.
Thank you.
All right, we will do a.
Second?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Eric Diamond?
Aye.
Gary Sullivan?
Aye.
Chris Monfort?
Aye.
John Waddleton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
All right, so we need that for the other meeting minutes. Eric, you want to try? Motion to review and approve?
Yeah, I don't have the date in front of me.
July 6, I mean, June 6. Oh, my God. Thinking about my kids' birthdays already.
Motion to review and approve minutes for July 6, June 6, as printed.
It's Canadian time.
So moved.
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Eric Diamond?
Aye.
Gary Sullivan?
Aye.
Chris Monfort?
Aye.
John Waddleton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
All right.
All right. So the next item, Town Planner Updates. Rich?
Pretty, pretty brief for you in terms of the wastewater. So unfortunately, we're not going to be able to do the ground penetrating radar for the wastewater. We couldn't get it, they couldn't get a contractor to be able to do it in a timely way. So what they're going to do, they're going to go out and do the borings at the beginning of July and put the monitoring wells in, so.
So when will we get the results of the borings?
It'll, probably the end of July-ish, probably beginning of August.
So we won't have them for our July meeting?
No, I would expect the, the August meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does that change the timeline overall?
Not, not too much, no, no. Just a recap, once we get those results, then we'll be coming back to talk about the findings and then those next steps, but, so August 30 will be the.
And then we're still good with all of that as far as funding goes?
Yes, yep. So that, that's being funded through earmark that we got, we have a contract extension.
Yeah, but that one has to get used a certain amount of time, right?
Yeah, by next June.
Okay.
June 3, 2023. Master plan, you did bless the RFP. It has been advertised, I have had a few requests, so we're sending that out, we'll see as it goes. I will, you know, wait till the end of the week and I'll send it update, how many, I think we've had three requests so far, so.
Good.
That's not too bad.
So we'll start seeing those for our next meeting. So we'll start seeing those for our next meeting?
Yeah, for the next meeting, correct. Southwood Hospital, we had the meeting on June 6. I think it was pretty well attended in person and virtually.
Any updates on those questionnaires?
So I do have to get, so that's on my to-do list, to get those out. Josh has provided that information to me. The one unfortunate thing is that we don't have audio for the recording.
Yeah.
So that was. No. Yeah, so that, that was, that was quite.
Can YouTube like read lips and translate it into?
That's the thing, it's like it uses the audio to create the captions, unfortunately.
Yeah.
That's how I did the minutes for it, since it was, it was very brief.
Right.
But I had to capture the vote you guys did for the RFP. So I literally was like reading lips.
Reading, trying to read, yeah.
I'm like, all right, I think I, somebody made the motion.
We should talk to the IT team about creating a way to record locally. That way we always have a copy.
So what we will probably not do is, so Josh was using his Zoom.
Right.
It wasn't through us.
Yeah, but if we were still being able to record locally, we would still have a digital copy on our own servers.
Bring back the cassette recorders we used to have.
Analog's always.
So he has, so he has the recording, it's just no audio.
No, 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 I'm saying, so you have the Zoom platform creating a recording on their own servers, but we've got all this fancy AV equipment, which I know a lot about. If we had a line into a recording stack that was over there, recording onto a, a digital platform, we'd have another recording of it, just in case anything else happened. And we could always play back that recording and get the audio from there. It's a small little uplift to our IT budget, but.
What was the problem with the audio? Was it the Zoom or was it?
We don't know, I mean, because Josh was like hosting the meeting, right?
Yeah.
I know there was an issue on my end because I was on the Zoom and I would be able to, I was talking and nobody could hear me.
And there was no audio.
Right.
Well, next go around, we're going to make, whatever we do, we're not going to repeat that.
Lesson learned, we should be hosting it.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Because that's exactly, because we're recording and then NCTV is recording and then we can rebroadcast it, so. So it won't be, we won't be doing that.
Forward though, we should think about that.
We do have a question from Karen.
Yep, another comment, another comment from the peanut gallery. The problem with the audio was Katie had taken all that equipment there in the room up to the graduation, King Philip graduation, the day before. And she brought it all back and she forgot to hook in one of the audio lines. And that is why there's no audio.
Thank you.
That'll help you sleep better tonight, right?
It will, yeah.
Uh huh.
But I do like John's idea of just having a cassette recorder right there.
Old school.
She feels, she feels terrible, by the way.
Just got to make sure when you, when the tape stops, you can stop the meeting, flip it.
Stop the meeting, we flipped it.
Yep, I remember those days, yeah.
Well, thanks Karen, that fills in the other, I wasn't aware of that.
Thank you Karen.
Definitely does.
Okay.
Do you have another question, Karen? Your hand's still up. Oh, okay, she was just waving hi.
So anyway, I'm going to, I'll have to put the materials up on the website. So that's on my to-do list to do that. And then we'll, in terms, we'll have this, the survey questions up there for people to take as well. So you got to make sure, I said to Josh that make sure that it's clear to people in terms of when they take the survey, and I'm going to just double check that the presumption that we, we want you answering the questions based on the property will be cleaned up. So, so do not have to say, you know, we want the property being cleaned up, so.
Right.
You know.
Fix the software so it doesn't explode, which means people work for one thing.
Right, yeah, exactly, that's another thing, yeah. So the next time around, I'm not sure we're going to, we'll, we have a better, that didn't, and he has used that software before, so I don't know what, what the issue.
Now, do, when we do projects like that, like that one, the fire department, do we have like specific webpages where all of the information is associated with those projects is listed?
So we have a, under the planning board, your webpage?
Yeah.
There is a Southwood, there's a Southwood page where that information is. Is hosted. And it will be, I know you weren't, we're launching a new website too, so.
Yeah, I'm excited to see that.
Yeah, so, so in any event, we got a little, some technical things to overcome there, but I think overall the, the meeting went well. But the segue to that is, which now with the audio being poor, the 28th of June, the housing production public forum will be held, which is completely Zoom, it's all virtual, no hybrid. You will be getting a postcard in the mail.
Okay.
To attend, so I strongly encourage you to jump on Zoom, participate. It's at 7:00 PM. And, because some of the larger housing questions, that's a good place to kind of talk about these things. And again, so, yeah, that's the, that's the.
This is the.
Folder page.
The folder page. So I did put up the PowerPoint presentation from that meeting on the 6.
Well, there is some additional stuff that Josh just sent me. We got to post there, so I got to look through it, but. So, but overall, I think it was, I think it was good to hear people.
Yeah, I'm curious to see, once we get it out there, what the, what the results will be from the community.
Yep.
Because the B1, when we had that survey for the downtown B1 district, it was, I mean, it was just overwhelming what people wanted. It was good, it captured a larger audience.
It did. So that, that was the update in terms of Southwood. Any other updates I can share with you, and I do have, just briefly? Potential zoning changes for the fall. So at the July meeting, what I would like to do is, and if you go on your shared drive, I know you've already been there, but you may not zoomed into it, but Bob has worked with his staff take the, the table allowable uses that we have and the ones that are off in their own districts, the B1, the C1, is to put it all into one chart. So going forward, if there's any uses, it'll be all one consolidated location.
That's pretty smart.
Yeah.
I saw that, I like that.
So that's one of the things he's been working really hard at and wants to, so he wants to come in on the meeting in July to talk through the, through the work and how he got to where he was at. It's, if you go through it, you know, it's amazing. You know, by not doing it this way, how things kind of creep over time by having these different sections. I mean, you'll see restaurants, I mean, there's multiple, you know, refer that restaurant. This definition is one, one's restaurant, then there's restaurants and.
So he did mention that there was plurals and non-plurals.
Yeah.
And then something about, something from a 2004 town meeting to remove.
Oh yeah, the temporary apartments, yeah.
Yeah, to remove that and it never got removed everywhere.
Right, right. So that, that's a, and I think.
And this is based off of the new codified version of the bylaws?
So that'll get incorporated into the new codification, yeah. So that, we have to work with Ecode on that. But really, so with this, this project is really just consolidate it and then there's going to be duplications of things that we want to go through and say, look, this really means the same thing. Can we get three of those and just delete them? So he'll go through, but he wants to come to talk about it on the.
He said something like, it's like 44 or different.
Yeah, there's a lot of articles, yeah, it's a lot, I know it's a lot of articles.
Yeah, I read his write-up, I was like, wow, that.
It's a big, it is a.
But it makes sense, it's taking all these different articles that have all this overlap and putting it into one big matrix.
Yeah, yeah.
It makes it easy to refer and should eliminate all the headaches that we've all, all experienced.
It should, and it came really clear, I think, more recently with the solar project, right? So you have, you know, solar in that solar bylaw, but then it's in the table allowable uses and so that was the more recent one that we, which is a good segue because I'd like to maybe try to tweak the solar bylaw as well in the fall where since the, you know, this board is going through the whole site plan approval process for solar, that's just consolidated in one spot as opposed to ZBA and planning board. Because right now you do the site plan approval and they're going before the ZBA for the use. But you're really doing a lot of, you know, they're really deferring to you as the planning board in many cases. I'm going to talk to the ZBA tomorrow night about that, but that's something. And then I know Andy Baganowski had sent me some stuff with some changes that, some best practices to make toward too, so that's.
So before we go too much further, can you send a link to that write-up and everything?
It's in, it's in the shared drive.
Okay, what, what's the name? Oh, it's for tonight?
Well, it was in.
I've stuck it in the folder for tonight.
Yeah, it's in tonight's folder, just as a preview.
Yeah.
And then my next question is, before we start talking about other things that we wanted to modify in the bylaws, we had several things last year that we wanted to look at as well as possible things to clean up. Do we have that running list somewhere that we can maybe prioritize those against these new ones as well?
Sure.
Last thing I want to do is start just saying, hey, yeah, we got to fix that one too, and then never touch them ever.
Trying to think.
We had the corner lots. So.
Corner lot.
Corner lots for, because we, we got that.
Yeah, the corner lot with two front yards.
Right, the corner lot with two front yards, so that would be something that if Bob could work on, you and Bob could work on. Also, if I recall, we, we had an article that came and got, it didn't pass, it was for the backlit signage?
Yes, the signage was another one.
Wasn't it something like we?
So I was going to get to that one next.
Yeah, okay.
There's a lot of nuances in that one, if I recall. Like somebody made a point, you know, what, what about the LEDs that light up the daily, you know, gas, gas station numbers? That's technically backlit.
Oh yeah, so it can be. Lottery sign that's, it lends its variety.
I drove home from Logan the other night, it's like, you know.
24/7.
I'm like, wow, that's probably, I was like, I just happened to notice coming. I don't think I've ever noticed before, but because it came up a couple of months ago.
Yep.
I was like, oh wow, yeah.
So the Norfolk Small Business Association was doing some work in terms of wanting to see some signage changes. So the, the thought I had was to give this board, which you already have, special permit provisions in terms of signage, to give you a little bit more latitude in terms of signage, in terms of lighting and those kind of elements of it, to review it and approve it. Because the, quite honestly, the largest challenge with signage is, you know, the translation between the written word and what you end up getting can be tough, where, you know, what you think you get in terms of writing and what you see is, and specs aren't necessarily the same. So my thought was a little bit of a step forward to give this board, at least if somebody wanted to propose signage that was lit, you could review and approve it. You also could reject it as well.
Do it by special permit.
Right, so you could, you would have that authority to do it. It's that little step forward.
But wasn't the problem that since it's a bylaw, we couldn't do the special permit process for it?
So that would be the proposal to change in the fall.
Got it, okay.
To make that change in the signed by law.
So could there be like design guidelines for, for, you know, signage? Like what, you know, what, what's, if it's up to special permit, what steers us in the right direction? Aside from me saying like, I hate the color orange, so I don't want any more signs.
We're not teed up for design guidelines with that, with certainly, well, we do have some design guidelines.
I think it makes sense, so like have the SBA identify their proposals, bring that to the design guidelines individuals and then bring it back to us to figure out the bylaw around it.
Yeah, so I'm going to, I'm going to start, I'm going to throw something out there and we'll kind of work towards it for the fall.
And then I think there was also something around the bylaw around tree removal on an individual's properties or earth removal and the amount. There was one particular project where someone was complaining about the amount of earth that was being removed from the property and the bylaw around that and the authority having the, the, the one who would provide the, the fine or something like that, I think. I forget who it is in the bylaw, but there was an issue with that.
Wasn't that the property on Seacom, the?
Yeah.
It was on Seacom.
And it was, they weren't, I think it was, they weren't removing this, they were moving it around on the.
Yeah, the complaint from the, the butter was that they were removing it.
Right.
And they couldn't quantify how much earth was actually being moved or anything like that. So it kind of falls in that gray area. And then the, the person that would go out there and be the authority isn't properly named in the bylaws. So there was a note for us to revisit that as well.
Yeah, I think the enforcement is actually the police department.
Police department.
Right, but then the police department, when we had conversations with them, they're like, yeah, no, we don't know anything about earth removal, so.
It was Seacom Street was because it was a farm.
Right.
Commercial earth removal permit is pretty good.
Okay.
It's pretty restrictive and residential the same way. It was the, the farm that threw the, the wrench in.
Right, and then there's those, being able to identify that within the bylaws or something was what we were looking to do at one point in time.
So maybe just give more clarity.
Right.
On what is the enforcement agent and really the police probably isn't the correct enforcement agent.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I kind of forgot about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we, we definitely had a few old items that we wanted to revisit at some point in time. I'm not sure if they're the right ones to prioritize for the fall, but we should definitely have a running list somewhere that we can refer back to and reprioritize from time to time.
I do recall the ones you just mentioned, but.
Yeah, and the sign one is good, I like what you meant, you know, reach out to the Small Business Association, see what their thoughts are. I think, Rich, you may have already done that.
I mean.
Yeah, I have done it. What I asked them to do was, you know, see, you know, when you see good signage, tell them where you see it.
Yeah, we had one, a representative come to one of our meetings to discuss it at one point prior to going to the town meeting. But nothing seemed to, it kind of fizzled.
It was all about a goodie, right?
Oh, that was.
That was February, right, but, that's okay. No, we, Chris, we just mentioned, does come to memory. I'll reach out to them again, see if they had any, I'll let them know that I'm working on it. But the concept would, you know, would give you in terms of, quite honestly, it might be less of a lift to give you some latitude to look at on a case-by-case basis and then work our way into it.
Yeah, I, I see it as a two-phase. One would be the special permit, and then after that, once the design guidelines are, you know, solidified, that we don't need the special permit anymore, as long as they adhere to the design guidelines. That's when we would just permit it.
And one of the things that, in talking with Bob Bullock about this, there is signage in the general bylaws and the zoning bylaws. It's, you know, consolidated into one location. Probably the, the right thing to do too as well, so that would be part of it. So let's see, I always say let's see because we're into the fall and coming out of the summer, but at least those are the goal, you know, the.
Yeah, we just don't want, right, it kind of fizzled out, let's keep pushing.
Yeah, keep moving it forward and if it doesn't make it to the fall, we could always keep moving it to the spring.
The idea that I have here is that we've got a pretty solid board from a perspective of election times right now. John being the only question whether or not he's going to go next cycle. But, you know, between all of us, we've got Quorum for quite some time.
You understand, the signed bylaws were written by Dan Winslow 50 years ago. 50 years ago. So you imagine what is transacted, just how you live in 50 years. And, and the sad thing is with these folks coming in, remember the lady that was representing? Very astute, you know what? We have to help them prosper.
Absolutely.
This is really tough, you can't go, there's on a sign every time you have a special or separatory. We have to help them prosper.
100%.
And that's more important than maybe somebody's idea of aesthetics, you know, in different spots. There has to be a happy medium so these folks can really do well, you know? Especially today.
100%.
I'd like to have them back and get their thoughts. They would know, and when someone has so many different specials just during the afternoon, they can't put that all up with letters on a sign. You have to have something flowing to let folks know, you know?
Absolutely.
That's always been an issue with a lot of us.
Yeah, I'll circle back with them. And then, so that's, that's kind of.
So speaking of all the different bylaws, how's Ecode doing with making all the final changes and getting everything ready for us?
As far as I know, I'll have to double check. As far as I know, I think it's all ready to be teed up, it's just a matter of getting the attorney general's approval, so.
Okay, so that's what we're waiting on now.
Yeah, so we're waiting on the attorney general.
Because it's my understanding, we're going to, then we'll have a, it'll be on our website, it'll be searchable.
In terms of, you know, when, when you're changing the bylaws in May, you know, April, May time, the AG might be a little bit busier because everybody's out there changing bylaws, but it's 90.
Normally, so bylaws are supposed to be done in the fall.
Right.
For the AG reason and secondly. For the AG reason, and secondly, they don't want the budget spring meeting tied up with zoning, which is very involved.
Right.
Confusing, and it just, it makes sense, you know?
So we should, we should have, probably by the end, so it's 30 and 90 days. They've been, they've been in consultation when the attorney general's office, on, you know, submitting the, I know Betsy's been working two of them, when the package was submitted, to make sure the AG is, is in good order, and they've seen other ECO changes before, so, so I would think we'll probably hear by the end, it'd be the end of July somewhere there, and then they'll, I'll get a launch date from there, but.
Okay.
And that would be like a, a great success of ours to advertise on the front of our town site?
Yeah.
Yep, I agree.
That's all I had.
Any other new old business?
Nope. Is everybody here for the summer meetings?
So, that's what July. July 12th.
And then August 30th.
And then August 30th.
August 30th.
July 12th is here. It is.
That week?
Before.
Well, it's the week before, but yes.
So July.
I think we recently did this and we were looking pretty.
July 12th, good.
Yeah, so far, so good.
30th is a Tuesday before, before Labor Day weekend.
You may need to hold a special to go over the, you know, conduct maybe interviews for master plan, we'll see.
Yep.
Okay.
Close, and we'll.
What were the dates that you advertised?
July 7th. It's the due date.
Final replies?
Yeah.
And then that's with the questions and responses going out?
The questions were, I'm trying to think, it was June, it's coming up, it's actually June 20th, I think, was the questions.
Okay. And now, are the questions gonna come to us? We would answer them, or is that something that you'll take care of?
I'll take care of the questions. I don't know what to talk about.
But we'll see the questions and the answers for.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
When, how long?
And then answer Eric's question, because I remember Eric said, what if we, hopefully we don't get to that what if we don't get, but it could happen.
What's the what if?
Well, we don't get good responses.
Oh, oh, if we don't get a good response, all right. I mean, you've gotten three people interested, three companies interested so far.
Three, yeah.
How long has the remote meetings been extended, the Zoom meetings been extended for?
So at the moment, it goes to July 15th.
July 15th of this year?
Of this year.
Okay.
But the Senate version of the budget included the extension to December 30th or 31st of 2023.
Okay.
And.
Wow.
And it's in conference, it went to conference committee.
Okay.
So between the House and the Senate to try to come up with a compromise.
I just asked because summer's coming up, we're all gonna be busy with vacations and whatever, and, and more than likely, we'll, may have to do a Zoom meeting to, to do these interviews, or some of us may have to be remote.
Right. I'm crossing my fingers, they get, get to the business and extend the.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I think, you know, the evidence has certainly come in statewide, that the participation has been increased by having remote.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I think, hopefully that.
When it allows the flexibility that we have here, I mean, Eric couldn't join us in person tonight, but now he can, and same thing with Melissa. I mean, it's, it's just great. We get much more participation from the board and also the community. So hopefully they do.
Yeah. Always write it into our own, like, we can do, as a town, we can do remote option in our bylaws. We couldn't, we can do remote participation, yep. And if you recall, way back when, there was reluctance to do it, but I think the pandemic.
If somebody, oh, I can't.
What would you guys do without me from Miss Riley?
Exactly.
Exactly.
What's that? Oh, she's in the chat.
In the chat.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so. The timing might be right to revisit it, you know, especially.
That's something that would have to come through budget season, because we'd need to allocate the finances towards it for the subscriptions, for the licensing?
No, 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 the. We can just allow it to happen, and then we can work backwards from there.
Got it, okay.
Because prior to the pandemic, some towns had adopted, the select board had adopted remote participation. And there was all, you know, traditionals, whoever you want, you know, whatever, reasons why some people.
Times have changed.
Support it, but out of necessity, the pandemic has shown that it's really, I think it's.
I would write that one down, put that on our list so we can prioritize it.
Remote participation.
Yeah, that's from the select board, though. But can't we write it so that the select board would?
Sure.
If it doesn't go through, sure.
If it doesn't.
Yeah, yeah.
If it doesn't.
But it might be a moot point, you don't even have to.
Well, why not double dip? Because no matter what, if they decide after 2023, they're not gonna do it anymore, we've got it there.
Oh, yeah.
What is it gonna hurt for us to just have it available?
Sure. No, that, no, it's a fair point. I mean, they might tell you to wait, because it might just be taken care of by the, they might just amend, you know, change the open meeting law.
Yeah, they might actually change that open meeting law and extend it.
That's really what they.
But is that the proposal on the table, though, or is it just to?
Right now, it's an extension, but I think the, the discussion is to permanently change the open meeting law, so it becomes part of the law. So it's not, you don't even have